Donnybrook is made possible by the members of 9 PBS.
Well, thanks for joining us for this edition of Donnybrook on opening day in St. Louis. And we've got our great lineup batting leadoff, she's the news director for the Big 550 KTRS and co-host of the Jennifer and Wendy Show, Wendy Wees. Batting second from the St. Louis Post Dispatch, the veteran himself, Mr. Bill McClellan, another veteran from rawstory.com, the Riverfront Times and 550, batting third, Mr. Ray Hartman. And batting cleanup from the St. Louis American, KMOX and 590, Mr. Alvin Reed. Well, before this hour is over, we're going to talk to the CEO and the president of the St. Louis Zoo, Jeffrey Bonner. Dr. Bonner has been kind enough to join us for Next Up. A sad note, however, we lost a good friend of the 9 PBS this past week when we lost Ted Koppeler, who had been the president of our board of KETC. Of course, he was also the creator of the animated series Voltron. He did great work renovating Maryland Plaza in the Central West End, and he was probably best known as the head of KPLR Channel 11. And here in St. Louis, we often saw him in the front row behind the batter at Busch Stadium when we were watching the Cardinals play. He had those great seats all those years. Well, of course, he was not in that seat today. And we extend our prayers and thoughts to his family, Wendy. He was a great St. Louis leader and generous in many ways.
He was very, very kind. And I had seen him, as we all had, at numerous events over the years. And when I found myself unemployed, I received a handwritten note inviting me to come down to his office. He said, I'd love to talk to you about some possibilities, some opportunities that we have. And I was deeply touched that somebody who had as many responsibilities as he had, and that he would take the time to do such a gracious, gracious thing. It meant a great deal to me, and I will always remember him fondly.
I had the opportunity to do business with Ted when I had the magazine. And first, just a prince of a guy, just terrific, understated. And I just want to say, I don't think people realize how much he meant to the Central West End, what he did in Maryland Plaza. Really, and never somebody to take a lot of credit. But he was a real champion of the city, and he will be missed.
Ray, you are so right. He spared no expense in his renovations on Maryland Plaza. He put in money, the likes of which you see in places like New York and Chicago, and did a fantastic job. Well, Alvin Reed, big mayoral contest this week, and it turned out that the treasurer, Tashara Jones, defeated Alderman Kara Spencer 52% to 48%. What's your analysis of what happened Tuesday in St. Louis?
Well, a few things. One, that's a trend. So we had multiple candidates, and the top two, you know, would then have a runoff. First time we have done that. And from where Tashara was and Kara Spencer was, after the, I guess, what do we call it, the runoff of the primary, it basically held. Now, who knows if that will continue in the future? But I find that interesting, that, you know, she was the presumptive leader, she was the leader in votes, and she actually won by about the same number of votes. That would have been predicted. So that was interesting. So now, you know, you win, and you have to govern. And I would think that, as I headed into the job, if I were in her position, crime, 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 crime. That's what the first thing that I would do. And whatever it took to convince people that that's our first initiative, you know, that's the path I would go down. Progressive or not, that's what we got to do first.
You know, I thought, and I'm writing a column for Sunday, that the unsung heroes were the people who stayed home, some of them. I mean, some stay home because they're lazy, and some just aren't paying attention. But over 70% of the electorate didn't vote. And I found that refreshing, just because I was afraid that this would turn into a huge racial thing, and that a lot of people, including some friends of mine, would go out and vote for somebody who looks like them, even though they didn't like the platform of either person. And I talked to a friend of mine and said, you know, what'd you do? He said, I stayed home. Why would I vote? And I thought, good for you. That's a principled thing to do. And there was a time when that wouldn't have happened, when people like I'm talking about would have gone to the polls to vote against somebody, and for no good reason. So I salute those who stayed home. You know, like I say, I know not all of them were principled. But I thought it was a heartening thing, and I was glad to see Tashara Jones wins. I thought she did a better job as treasurer than people give her credit for, just because she succeeded Larry Williams, who ran it like a medieval fiefdom. Well, let's just be clear, the Founders Association does not endorse that. But I mean, I'm guessing McClellan's column will lay it out just perfectly. So I'll wait to read the column version of it. But I wouldn't, I will say this, I think Tashara Jones has the potential to be a great mayor. We'll have to see what happens. But we haven't really had one of those that I can remember. And she has the potential. I was listening to her on CNN, and I thought, you know, we take for granted, you know, even because we're used to her being around. This is the city's first African-American mayor, and that's a big deal.
African-American female.
Not mayor, woman mayor, the second female, and the third African-American. But the first black woman, and in a year where Cori Bush and Kim Gardner had their big wins, we kind of are, we just don't appreciate that. The other thing I thought was interesting, and I don't want to make it about race, because I don't think that's the only issue, is who would have dreamed that we'd have all three members of E&amp;A, which is in a weak mayor system matters, be African-Americans? Hardly anybody's even noticed that. First time ever. I would have, that would have been more of a stretch 20, 30, 40 years ago, to think of that. We had a lot of years where it was all white. But it's really interesting. And I think one of the nice things about that is people are going to understand that the African-American community is not a monolith. You're going to have three individual people speaking their minds, having differences. It's going to be really interesting to watch. But E&amp;A is going to have every bit as much of sparks flying as it ever did. But at least we can get away from just pigeonholing everybody.
I think that, I think that Tashara Mayor-elect Jones, when she said that she is looking at her new job through the lens of black reality, and, you know, and what the conversation she had to have with her son, and all of that, I think a lot of people are going to be watching this city as we go forward. I don't know the definition, according to Robert's Rules of Order, for, I mean, what exactly is it progressive? Is it an impatient Democrat? I don't, I don't know what that is. But a lot is riding on this, because this is, or used to be, a world-class city. And now the progressives are in charge. So, you know, we all have, we all have a stake in Mayor-elect Jones in her tenure, and we should all wish her well. But at this moment, you know, when you think of all of the problems that are confronting her, I couldn't help but think, be careful what you wish for, for you may surely get it.
You know, people don't like to hear old guys say, hey, everything is moving along, and, you know, things are better than they used to be. Because like Wendy says, people are impatient. But I was looking up when Larry Williams became treasurer, and it was in 1981, Paul Bear was elected comptroller, and Mayor Shaim appointed Larry Williams. And the Globe Democrat headline was, "Mayor Appoints Black as Treasurer." And I thought, that's not that long ago. I mean, things have moved forward.
Well, when you look at it, I mean, think about it. You've got the superintendent of schools, the police chief are also African-American. And so they're, you know, times have changed. There's no doubt about that. But Ray Hartman, isn't it possible that we put a little more stature to the mayor's office, and I think you alluded to this with the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, than really, than the mayor has in terms of power? Because some cities, the mayor has a seat on the school board. That's not the case here. The mayor does have control over the police department, finally. But the police, you know, the mayor isn't in charge of many facets, like the recorder of deeds, doesn't run the sheriff's department, doesn't run the treasurer's office, as we know. And then when it comes to the budget, doesn't even run that, has to share it with two other people, the comptroller and the president of the Board of Aldermen. And then there is the Board of Aldermen, which is progressive now. 15 of the members are so-called progressives, as Wendy mentions. And we wonder what's going to happen to the city, especially now, this is 517 million federal dollars coming our way. Ray?
Well, first of all, you know, I want to say one thing. And one of the progressives was Kara Spencer, who I think, I know there's a lot of hard feelings after every race. I think Kara Spencer did herself proud and has got a good future in the city. So I just want to say that. And you know who else said that was Darlene Green. She put out a statement last night, or Tuesday night at about 10 o'clock, which was a sharp contrast to the outgoing mayor, who put out a statement about Proposition E passing, the city earnings tax, which was like observing that the Arch looked good tonight. And
But what about, what does a progressive Board of Aldermen mean?
To your question on the board.
And what are they going to do with a half a billion dollars?
Well, I think, you know, we'll see what they want to do. I will say this.
But what should they do?
Megan Green made a point. This is a big win, a big night for, she was one of the big winners. One of her critics, the Post Dispatch, is a big loser. And Megan Green, Megan Green made, you know, when I had her on, she talked about three things that were right away going to happen. The city workhouse closing, and the airport privatization to be dead, and some reform of TIPS, which Charlie, you should like. I think that it's too early to tell. That's why you have a legislative process about what they're going to do with the large amount of money coming in. But this is a really interesting challenge for Louis Reed, because he's up for election in two years. And this is the first time he's had a Board of Aldermen that he doesn't control ideologically. At least, the way I've heard it scored is 15 progressives. And you understand, on any given issue, that can change. But that Louis does not have the control over that that he had before. So I think that's going to be interesting to watch.
I think our St. Louis Cardinals, opening day, St. Louis Blues, maybe to an extent MLS, this, the idea that we will give you anything you want is on hold for a while now. And I think that is one thing that will come from, you know, the Board of Aldermen. Then, I, just real quick, you know, she's the first black female mayor, and Louis Reed was, I believe, the first black, you know, president of the Board of Aldermen. God bless them all. But, you know, I'm a little older than they are. And if I had a dollar for, you know, the time I was the first, or I was the only black person, I could retire. So I don't look at stuff like that anymore as, whoa, that's historic. It's like, no, it's about time. Okay, let's move on.
Well, I will say this about Ray, you bring up the TIPS, and I think that's long overdue. And quite some time ago, when she was treasurer, I talked to Tashara Jones on KMOX, great radio program, by the way. And she said that she would be in favor of requiring a developer who gets a tax subsidy, let's say for residential, to set aside a certain percentage of the development for low and moderate income housing. And we should be doing that. That's long overdue. They were doing that in Boston 30-plus years ago. And another thing, the way the city is run right now, there is one agency that grants these TIPS, and it also gets 1% of the proceeds. So if the St. Louis Development Corporation gives a $100 million TIP, and it does things like this, they get $1 million. It's a perverse incentive that has to end. And Jacob Barker at the Post Dispatch has pointed this out. It makes no sense. But the result is, for this little government agency to get funding, it has to give rich people tax breaks. And I hope that the new mayor and the Board of Aldermen take that on.
Well, I don't think, I don't, I, no, I think one thing that's going to be very interesting about Mayor-elect Jones, she's, for so long, we just referred to her as Tashara, like Cher or somebody, but now she's Mayor-elect Jones.
Madonna.
Madonna. She is not going to mince words. She is not going to be encumbered by the same types of things that Mayor Lyda Krusen was encumbered by, or Mayor Francis Slade. I think she's going to speak very directly, and I think it's going to be fascinating. And when she sees stuff like this, Charlie, that you're talking about, I think she's going to, I think she's going to call it out, and I think she's going to call it out hard.
Well, let me ask you this, Bill, though. She has said that she's going to close that workhouse within 100 days. But on Easter Sunday, we had another uprising at the jail in downtown St. Louis. And the inmates, or as Jeff Smith would say, the residents, all right, the residents, the inmates, they broke the windows on the north side of Tucker, and then on the south side as well. They had difficulty quelling the disturbance. The next day, city officials said, hey, the locks haven't been working, and we're working on it. Turns out, the task force examining conditions at the jail determined that those locks haven't been working for five years. I think heads should roll. But I also don't see how any workhouse can be planned for closure. Do you?
No, I don't. I've been against the idea of automatically closing the workhouse. I think they should be working toward that. But I don't think that we're in a position to close it. But I found the most interesting thing about that story is that they have a plan to fix these locks, and it will cost 13.5 million. And that's kind of staggering. And it makes me think that this $500 million that everybody is so excited about will dissipate faster than you can imagine. I mean, if we get the locks fixed in 9/11, hire five, 10 more operators, that's probably, you know, half of the 500 million right there. So as far as the uprising at the workhouse, if the locks don't work, you're going to have that. I think they need to close the city workhouse ASAP. And it's back to what you were saying before. I think the difference, the mayor does set the table. The mayor is not one-third of E&amp;A. The mayor still sets the table. This will be one of Tashara Jones's early tests, is to see how fast she can, I mean, she's not a superwoman, but the question is how fast she can change kind of the tone. Because I think most of us look at this, and you just look at a common sense thing about, we can't get the locks to work on the cells. And I think people have a sense that they want somebody different, and some sort of, I don't know, aura of different leadership. And I think it's going to be really interesting. Everybody gets a honeymoon period, hopefully. It'll be interesting to see. But it's one of the first tests she's got, to see what she can move, what needles she can move on this.
Workhouse should be great.
Hasn't hurt political results.
I don't think that's so smart, really. There's a whole lot of, I know the progressives are big about closing the workhouse right now, and, you know, no cash bail and all that stuff. Yes, we are. There's a lot of people who are more concerned about safety and crime.
How can you be for closing the medium-security workhouse when it does have locks that work? Maybe that's why they want to close. That's why the progressives want to close, because it has locks. It also has running, it has running water, which the Justice Center does not. Talked to, I talked to a father of a guy who was in there for a year. His kid did not have a shower for 12 months. And that was at the Justice Center. And by the way, also, the workhouse on North Hall Street has outdoor areas where you can run around. I mean, there's no sunshine at all in downtown St. Louis. People have been in there for three years. They haven't seen the light of day, literally. I mean, so I, but look, I'm
Why won't we close them both down?
Yeah, I can't add anything than fix the locks, first of all. Okay. And anybody who, who, you know, did not get the locks fixed between the last incident and Easter should lose their job.
How many people do you think are lining up for Dale Glass's position? I'm sorry.
Well, I get you. But that is not the incoming, the incoming administration could do that. But I'm not yelling at them. This is the people that were in charge, who are no longer in charge. Okay? Thank God. All right. But, you know, we can move on.
Tashara, did you look at Tashara's team coming in with Blake Strode and some others? Tashara, the difference, you want to talk about a difference? It's a difference between having a mayor who's an ally of our city defenders, as opposed to an adversary. And for those of us
The mayor-elect says that her top, Ray, the mayor-elect said one of her first concerns is sitting down with progressives to discuss what it means to be a true ally of the black population in the city of St. Louis. That suggests to me that race is still going to be an ongoing issue, right?
It's always an issue. But if I were on that group, okay, and I'm not, but what, like I said, crime, 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 all right? Then, first of all, fix the locks to keep the alleged and those that are presumably guilty in their cell. Okay? Then, second, let's make it safe to walk, especially through the north side of the city of St. Louis. Okay? You could be progressive and do those things. I think it's not fair to say progressives want to just turn the jail doors open and whatnot, because you know I don't. I
I agree. I think, Alvin, you're right. Because Blake Strode and Art City Defenders, they want a humane treatment for those who are in there, if they have to be in there. It should not be some sort of modern-day Gulag, where there isn't the running water, and where prisoners are preying upon prisoners, and they wait for years for their cases to be adjudicated. So I'm with them on that. I just don't see what they're saying about the medium-security workhouse. However, Wendy, if we're going to take that half a billion dollars, do you think we should raise the pay of dispatchers? Aaron Heffernan, Sunday in the Post Dispatch, had a terrific story, taking a look at the 911 system, where, well, basically, in St. Charles County, 99% of 911 calls are answered within 10 seconds. It's 64% in the city of St. Louis. We're supposed to have 90 workers. We've got 60. We're supposed to have 15 people per shift. We have 10. The pay is below the national standard. And we had Alexis Zodos from Channel 4. She gets in a fender bender this past week, and 911 says, we don't have the resources to help you. David Carson, Pulitzer Prize-winning photographer for the Post Dispatch, he calls 911. He's on hold for 6 minutes and 45 seconds. What's going on in this town, Wendy?
Well, I think you just outlined it pretty clearly, Charlie. I mean, I think we have a crisis. And I don't think people like to think about the 911 situation until they have their phone in their hand. And Marion Ramsey, who was the one who was quoted as saying that she couldn't be quiet anymore, because what happens when the 911 calls come in, is that, you know, this blue light while they're in, while they're in a holding pattern, and she said it takes forever, if the blue light is ever even turned off, meaning that somebody in need of emergency assistance isn't receiving it. And to think that the 911 dispatch centers are down 30% in terms of employees in six years, that, that is, that should definitely be a top priority of the Jones administration. And I'm sure that it is one of the many top priorities. But it's disgraceful. And if you don't think that companies are looking at that kind of thing, that's, that's short-sighted.
You know, it was interesting in that story, that the, the crisis really began when the city got control of the police department. That's when all of a sudden, they cut jobs in 9/11. And, you know, for years and years and years, getting control of the police department was, you know, job number one, trying to get it through the legislature. And according to that story Sunday, first thing they did was cut 911 operators. I continue to think, and I was one of the fools that didn't realize we weren't going to have a police board. I think there should be more independence structurally than there was. That the reason for local control was to take it out of the political sphere of the Democrat governor. But, and I thought it was a really good story. That's a good point. Any 911 call that is late is unacceptable ever, much less all of them, or most of them. It's just nuts. And you're right, Wendy, I mean, it has, but once again, Tashara Jones just took on a really difficult job. Everybody knows that. She's got a lot of number-one priorities. And I, to me, the 911 thing is really glaring, though. And in fairness, Kara and Tashara were talking about this in the campaign. So I think you're going to see something happen.
Well, Alvin, we're almost forgetting, Alvin, aren't we, that the COVID-19 vaccine is still out there. And the city, along with FEMA and the National Guard, have set up a vaccination clinic, a big mass vaccination center at the Dome. Yesterday was the first day. They had capacity for 3,000 people, but only 700 people got in line for a vaccine. Why do you think so few?
Well, because since the governor decided we didn't need to have any shots, and rural tania had them all, people got to hustle it. We do what we do in metropolitan areas. We get the job done. And people were out there getting the job done. If they had said there's mass vaccination site, and had all of the tiers that are open now a month ago, those 3,000 shots would have probably gone in the first three hours. It's like everything else. It's going to be gambling. It's going to be marijuana. It's going to be this. It's going to be that. We're late. This state is late. This should have opened before these other places opened in wherever, where they threw 700 dosages in the dumpster and carrying on. So now here we are, and most people have already taken care of their own business.
I don't know, Alvin. I think we still, about 80% of the people in the city aren't vaccinated yet.
Well, I'm just saying.
According to state numbers. Now, maybe if they go to Mount Vernon, Illinois, and get the vaccine, it's not showing up locally. That's possible.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think St. Louis County has any idea how many people have already got the virus. Oh, by the way, two days ago, I finally got from St. Louis County to make an appointment to, you know, get a vaccine. Well, it was already done. So, and they tell you, just don't respond. They don't tell you, hey, I already got it. So the county doesn't know that I have it. All the county knows is, I didn't show up.
I, first of all, I think Governor Reed's career just tanked in outstate with that rural tania jab. No pun, no pun intended, that jab. But on the other hand, I still think a lot of people are reluctant to get the shot. I mean, I think there's still, that's still a significant portion of those numbers.
And I think it's really tragic. I mean, there are some cultural reasons why some people are reluctant. There's some political reasons that really don't make any sense at all.
And they're all ridiculous, Ray.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying they don't make, they're not, they're not good. But it's something we have to deal with. Although, as far, as far as Governor Reed goes, "Our State is Late" has a really good ring to it. I like that. It might be bad-ated, no way. I think he should run on that one.
All right, McClellan Reed, let's get on it.
Our state And we'll get those locks fixed.
We'll get those locks.
Every, every time you say, as an old speechwriter, I can see, we need to do such-and-such, because our state is late.
Our state is late.
Well, let's just say, there are vaccines available at the Chesterfield Mall, thanks to the St. Edward Group and St. Luke's Hospital, and at St. Louis Community College, Forest Park, and downtown at the Dome, and probably many other places. We encourage everybody to get a vaccine, so we can get this economy back, get people back in the classrooms, and so we can have Donny Bash in October. Hey, we have to take a break here. We'll be back in just a moment on Next Up. Dr. Jeffrey Bonner, CEO and president of the St. Louis Zoo. Don't touch that dial.
Donnybrook is made possible by the members of 9 PBS.
Well, thanks for joining us for Next Up. And we are so glad that Dr. Jeffrey Bonner, the president and CEO of the St. Louis Zoo, found time and is scheduled to join us on 9 PBS, especially after we heard the word, doctor, that you're going to retire in the next year or so. So tell us what your plans are, and what, if anything, this means for the zoo's planned expansion in North County.
Well, as I've said, I'm going to be available. I'll make myself available. I'm not going far. We're talking about getting a little apartment in the city, or maybe a small condo. So we'll be around, not going very far. I think, in terms of what it means for the expansion in North County, I'm really excited about it. I think we bring in somebody, I keep saying, fresh eyes, fresh legs, somebody that really wants to take what we've, what we've built so far, and take it really to the next level. And that's what I anticipate having. I think we're going to get somebody great. And this thing is going to go further, faster, and higher than we ever dreamed.
Ray?
Dr. Bonner, when do you think the North County project's going to be done?
Well, you know, it's probably as early as 2026. They've already started working. If you drive past there, you'll see that they're moving earth. And pretty soon, they'll demo buildings that we know we won't need, and begin the process of enhancing the envelopes of buildings that we do need. So it's starting now, but it's going to take a long time.
But you are collecting the tax now, right?
Yeah, yeah. And it's going partially.
I noticed you announced that it would be free for county residents. What's the rationale for that versus the policies you have? And, you know, I've talked about it.
Ray, we were listening to you.
Is that right? Well, no, but what, why would you have it? I think it makes I think it makes, I assume you did it because those are the, the county taxpayers are the ones.
Right.
Providing the tax. Why is that different from the city and county taxpayers?
Yeah, as opposed to the Zoo Museum District. Well, you know, what I've always said is it's, it, you know, it's your zoo. So I've had this extraordinary privilege of, 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 you know, getting to take care of it for you. And, and when we, when we talk to people and we do surveys constantly, there's, there's two people that do nothing but that. What, what we found is about seventy-two percent of people wanted to remain free to all. Seventy-seven percent African Americans want it to remain free for all, which is not, not a surprising differentiation. But then the remaining, say twenty-five percent are scattered between three different categories. So the overwhelming majority say they want it free. It's your zoo. So, you know, that's what we're going to do. I, I think the other thing though, you know, even if we were to, if we were to try to reopen that legislation in, in Jeff City, I, I don't think there's a, a bill in the history of, of our, of our state government that's, that's, that's come out the way it went in. You know, there's so many changes and I think especially that would be true of tax bills. And, uh, and, and this legislature's shown no reticence about imposing its will on St. Louis City and County, as, as you all know. So I think it would be ill advised to, to try and reopen the legislation, e- even if I thought, you know, that, that we should charge. But what I think doesn't really matter is what you think that's important.
Alvin?
Well, Dr. Bonner, I'm just, I'm one of those seventy-one percent, I guess, and, or seventy-four percent and seventy-seven percent. And, and it just means a lot to me that we offer the world the zoo and we get so few things right in our region. And this is absolutely right. So now you're leaving and, you know, the, the future is, is almost here. Do you have any thoughts about like who comes in, you know, an outgoing coach who has done a great job for, won Super Bowls? You know, and he's, he's got going. He, he has an idea out there of, I think, who could like, you know, fit in here and do this job well. Now, I'm not asking you to tell us who you think, but I mean, are you working on that? Are, are there some thoughts as to who replaces you?
Yeah, I, you, what, what's happened is that the, the commission and, and as well as representatives from the association and community leaders have formed a, a, a search committee and they've hired an executive recruiter and that person is just starting her work. So I, I, I have every confidence that they're going to come up with somebody that's a lot better than me. And, uh, and I think there's people that are a lot better than me out there. So I'm not worried. I'm really not.
I doubt that. Then I'll just leave it at that.
Hey, Wendy?
Dr. Bonner, I know that you said that one of the most difficult decisions that you had to make during the pandemic was closing the Children's Zoo. And I know that there was a, the, the dinosauris exhibit was scheduled to open in the spring. Where do we, where do we stand on dinosauris? And I ask this as a newly minted grandmother, so I have a vested interest in this right now.
I should know the answer to that. I think it's a couple more weeks before we open. I was just through there and it looks fabulous. So it can't be too much longer. I should be able to think of the date for that. But, uh,
You have a lot on your plate. Don't worry about it.
So we're, but we're excited about it. It's, it's, it's fun. It's, it's really interesting. And it lets us talk about things like extinction in a way that I don't want to say is friendly, but is more approachable. And, 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 and that works for even very young children to talk about a very difficult subject. So we're looking forward to, to having that opportunity to do some interpretation around them. The other thing that's fascinating is that dinosaurs, there are still dinosaurs on the planet, of course. Every species of bird is, is a dinosaur. And, and helping people to understand that, that connection, that, that lineage, if you will, is, is a really fun thing to do. So I'll also have some birds just wandering around.
I, I thought when you said there were still dinosaurs, you were talking about my male colleagues on the Donnybrook panel, but, but that's apparently.
That's enough out of you.
I thought crocodiles. I was like, yeah, birds. I was like, crocodiles. Yeah, okay.
Bill McClellan, your question for Dr. Bonner.
Let's keep it on, on dinosaurs then and go to Jurassic Park. I, I know that the zoo works with endangered species. What about extinct species? Like, you know, there was that woolly mammoth found in the Siberian permafrost and they think maybe they can bring a woolly mammoth back to life. Are you in favor of that? Might, might in that North County area when we have wild animals roaming around, might there be a woolly mammoth among them?
Well, we, it's, it's a serious question. I mean, because there's a, there's a profound.
I mean it as serious. I do.
What we found is that the genetic material in, in, in mammoth and mastodon eggs, they have sex cells, germ cells. That, that genetic material was, was not appropriately flash frozen. So, so the, the question is kind of a moot one. There isn't the genetic material to reconstruct those animals. If we could, yeah, we could, we could fertilize a, an egg in, or implant otherwise a fertilized cell in, in a, in a, probably African elephant, not Asian, they would be a little closer to African elephants and would produce a viable offspring. Yeah. I mean, it could happen, but the genetic material isn't there.
But you, you don't have any ethical problems about bringing an extinct species back?
Yeah, I, I think we've got, we, we, we have enough problems with the extinct animals that, you know, the animals that we have. I, I think the, the ethical question that, that is, is most likely to be faced is, is what do you do with a species like the American red wolf? That has, that all of them have some coyote genes in them. Coyotes have basically outcompeted red wolves, which is why there's virtually none of them left. There's left less than twenty in the wild, a couple hundred in human care. And, and so do they deserve a chance, even though they might have eight or 10% of their genetic heritage makeup being that of a coyote? To that, I would say, yes, they do deserve just as much as any other, any other species would.
Dr. Bonner, are there species at the zoo right now here in St. Louis that do face, face an extinction worldwide in the near future?
Well, we have species at the zoo that are extinct in the wild. So yes, it's already happened. But as far, as far as species that will soon be extinct, you know, really, actually, we could talk about species that are functionally extinct. So if you're down to less than a hundred, you know, you're, you're, you're barely hanging on by a thread. And yeah, there's several species. So Amur leopard, we would have that would be in that, you know, hundred less, maybe addicts at three hundred. You know, just a lot of the cats are in big trouble. The, the Amur tigers are in terrible trouble in the wild. So when, when you start talking hundreds, you know, I would say that that falls in the category that you're asking about. And there's a lot of species like that.
Right. Ray?
Before I get off of animals, just so I don't, thank you for the dinosaur reference, Wendy. The, I am the only person, I believe, of us that actually saw Phil the gorilla when he was alive.
Yeah, I did.
I have a soft spot in my heart for the zoo and the animals. I do want to ask you another governance question, though, and that is.
Let me talk about Phil first, though, okay? My dad's name was Phil. And when I was a little kid, he would tell us that Phil the gorilla was named after him. This is how I started to get to him. I was twenty-seven years old when I found out it wasn't true.
With regard to the Zoo Museum District and the structure, when the Zoo Museum, Zoo Museum District was formed in seventy-two, whatever, the St. Louis metropolitan area was just under one point nine million and at least eighty-five percent of that was in the city and county. As you know, your native St. Charles County has grown and others. And now St. Louis is, who knows with the twenty twenty census, but I'm guessing it's forty-six, forty-seven percent probably instead of eighty-five. So the question I have is, you're a guy with nothing but vision. What is your vision for our region to be able to support the zoo? Because people in St. Charles County and Jefferson County love it every bit as much and claim it every bit as much as those of us in the city and county. What is, what can be done so that the region for its long-term success? And by the way, it's not just the zoo. It's obviously all five institutions. What can we do to bring the region to where everybody's paying their fair share?
Well, I, I guess I would say there's, there's two different paths that we can, we can go down. Obviously, we go back to Jeff City and seek to get enabling legislation, which we tried to do once. That would allow St. Charles Franklin and, and Jefferson to join the tax district. And the same thing, by the way, could be done in Illinois because the same, obviously making that case for Illinois as well. So Madison, St. Clair, Monroe. And, and that's one way to go. I, I think we tried it. It was very difficult. That doesn't mean it can't be done. It doesn't mean we shouldn't back up and take another run at it. We absolutely should. I, I think the other path, though, when, when Wild Care Park opens in North County, I think it's going to be fabulous. And I believe that a county executive like Mr. Elman may, may think that it makes sense to take money from his county budget and give it to Wild, Wild Care Park so that residents of St. Charles can get in for free. And so perhaps in the taxing, taxing district, that would be possible. And, and I think justifiable, I, I, I think in, in, in someone like County Executive Elman's mind.
And you understand that was what I, as you know, my little lonely proposal. And just to clarify one thing on it, not to argue it, but the proposal would be to make it forever free for city and county residents. It wasn't ever to charge for everybody. I think if you ask that question, should tourists pay? And people who aren't supporting the district, I think you'd get a different question.
It's about eight percent. I'd agree with you, but by golly, they're, they're there. That's the important thing.
People obviously would want, absolutely, this city and county should be forever free. There's no question.
But that would, well, I'm, it's, I'm part of that one point nine million that you said. And thank goodness the zoo is free and for everybody who comes into town with me that the zoo is free. And, you know, I, I share your fears that, yeah, we start taking it with this, next thing we know, nobody's going for free.
Observation. I think what, what's important to me, what I've seen in, in the course of my professional life, there is a reverence for this zoo in this community that is simply unequal in any other community.
Thank you. And I have that. I have that. I'm, I'm just a kid from Kirkwood and I'm just telling you, growing up and doing that zoo, I, you know, I cover a middle class family, so I'm not, you know, talking about, oh, poverty and all that. I'm not saying that. But I'm just saying that that was a, that, that's a godsend for families like mine and people that come to town and whatnot. My question is this, okay? Favorite, where do you go? Your favorite thing? Any hope that we can get an additional polar bear or two? Or the way we're at standard wise now, that's hard to do. My nieces and nephews asked last time they were there and we got really cute video with him swimming in the background. So, so there's like, why is you just one? So any hope?
Yes, the short answer is yes. When the Endangered Species Act was, was passed under President Nixon, it had a thing called the remediation clause. And what that meant was you had to show that you were doing something for, for an endangered species in the wild. You'd have to show, show.
Okay.
Making a difference. And so the, the way the law is written, polar bears are marine mammals under US law. So we have to be able to show that we're expanding sea ice. And we've always said that, you know, world peace, we could probably do with enough money, but expanding sea ice would be quite a bit harder. And, and everybody knows that that's ludicrous, but it is literally the letter of the law. When the Endangered Species Act was written, no one could envision the environment disappearing. Ragmented, degraded, you know, all sorts of bad things. It can't disappear while sea ice is actually disappearing. So, uh, so under the terms of, of the Endangered Species Act, we can't. Now, we've been doing workarounds. I have to say that Senator Blunt was fabulous, fabulous in, in trying to, trying to get some sort of rational approach to this. Representative Clay was phenomenal, just phenomenal. But we, we weren't able to get it done and, and that's another thing that we're just going to have to back up. It's a new administration. We'll back up and take another run at it. But that, that's, the federal government has to give approval for that to happen.
Okay.
Plenty of bears. You know, there's orphaned bears all the time in Canada.
Oh, really? Oh, see, I didn't know that. All right, all right. I'll, I'll call the president. I, I got his, I got his.
If you've got his number, yes.
Dr. Bonner, it seems like there is, and at least in some quarters, there seems to be an increasingly adversarial relationship between zoologies, the zoological parks and animal rights activists. In the future, how would you like to see that relationship change? Is it possible to do that?
Yeah, just in terms of the premise of your question, I actually think it's getting better all the time. There was, there was for a long time, it was getting worse all the time and, and that seems to have shifted around. I, I think what, what has happened is that, that we've, we've truly found common ground that, that animal rights, it was not animal welfare organizations, but animal rights organizations have found common ground with, with zoos in that there are many things that we both care deeply about and that we agree on, you know, in, in absolute fundamental terms. You know, roadside zoos are, are an evil and, and, you know, I, I, keeping chimps in, in, in people's homes is, is inherently wrong. So, so we have so much things, so many things that we agree on that we've kind of left aside this. And I think that was part of it. I think the fact that zoos do so much more to help animals in the wild. We do so much to enhance the, the future and fate of, of wild things, of wild places. And, and I think that that was, is much more appreciated now. So people will say, animal rights side will say, you know, we don't agree with everything the zoo is doing, but, but look at the good things they are doing. And we're an animal welfare organization, not an animal rights organization, but there's certainly a lot of overlap. So it's getting better. Yeah, it is, it's, it gets better all the time.
Doctor, when the zoo bought the property right across Highway forty where the hospital had been, there, there was talk of, among other things, a parking lot with a gondola or gondola. We, we, I don't know how to spell it. Going from the parking lot to Highway forty. And I thought, it just sounded bizarre. But I mean, it would be spectacular. Is, is there still thoughts of that?
Yeah, well, in the first place, Bill, it's a gondola.
Gondola, okay, thank you. I've argued with these people about that and I think I've said gondola. I say gondola.
So when, when, when we bought that property, we said that this was a twenty-five year plan, you know, that, that, and now it's looking like it's probably going to take more like thirty years to implement. It's, it's a long, we love having the property because there's a six-story parking garage there. So that's very remunerative for the, for the zoo. We don't, don't very often charge visitors to park there, but we park our staff there and that opens spots for visitors on the south and the north lot. So we're, we're thrilled that we have it. It's, it's a long-term plan. I think the next generation of leadership have their hands full doing Wild Care Park, but, but after that, they have this incredible opportunity. You know, the zoo's not going to grow. I mean, our, our footprint is fixed, but being able to get the cars out of the south lot or maybe even out of the north, south and the south lot and get them all across the interstate. So we get the traffic out of the park. And then we can capture that awful asphalt and turn it into zoos. And it's what an opportunity. It's, it's, it is, you know, in the long term, that is the most exciting thing for the St. Louis Zoo, you know, that, that.
We could have woolly mammoths running around in the parking lot.
And have a big polar bear swim.
That makes the business job so much easier.
Dr. Bonner, what kind of visitor experience do you foresee at the North County facility?
Yeah, so different, so completely different. So I, I describe the zoo as, as a place where, you know, animals are, are kind of, you know, in one place and people are all the way around them, if you know what I mean. And there it's the exact opposite. You know, people are in a little conveyance and animals are all the way around them. So there's a different kind of scale, a different kind of scope. And, and here there's a, there's an intimacy, you know. And, and here we, we put you in very special environments and, and, you know, in the Antarctic with penguins or, or in the flight cage in, in a, in a Missouri swamp, Cypress Swamp. There it's really more, I guess here you would say we have curated nature. So it's beautiful here, right? It's just magnificently beautiful. The, the plantings are gorgeous, but it's not the same as being in the woods. And up north, we have the woods. So it's very, very, very different experiences, almost, almost contradictory or opposite experiences. So I, I think that's what we're looking for. Most people aren't going to ever get to go to Africa and I've had that, that, that privilege. And, and this is as close as you'll get.
Overnight camp? Would it be overnight camping? That sort of thing?
Sure. Yeah, I can see, we call it glamping, which is glamorous camping. We call gondolas gondolas, Bill, so just.
Okay, I'm, I'm on board.
You won me on the glamping. I, I'm not sleeping in a tent, but hey, yeah. I'll sleep with a lion. I can get a cocktail.
We have some beautiful lakes there. And also we have a very high point. So we did, what we're talking about is treetop lodging. And looking back into the facility, but looking out over the confluence. In fact, there's, there's a, a wonderful tower that goes eleven stories up. And we're, we're talking about having that just so you could view the arch, the downtown, as well as the confluence and, and also have a kind of a unique safari view. and, and also have a kind of a unique safari view. Uh, so it, it's almost like a hot air balloon or something gracefully going over the Serengeti. So I, I think, uh, I, I think the experience, uh, Charlie, is, is just gonna be very, very different, fundamentally different.
Right?
A concept I've heard years ago called the un-zoo, where animals are free and people are kind of.
Yeah.
In, in clothes. I- is this a sort of that, or is this, is that, is that just uh some stupid thing somebody came up with? Or is that potentially a trend where zoos look a little different? And obviously, it wouldn't apply to presumably all the reptiles or whatever, but, but the idea that zoo, the animals would somehow move around more freely and, and it'd be more like they're looking at us instead of we're looking at them, I guess.
And, and I think that that's a fair, a fair question. Coming out of the gate, what I would say is, there's always gonna be a place for a great urban zoo. You know, a hundred years from now, and, and what you're saying, I think, is very true, very insightful. I, I don't think, uh, uh, you're gonna have the same animals here at the St. Louis Zoo now, um, that, that you will say twenty-five or thirty years from now. So I think a lot of the, what scientists call charismatic mega vertebrates, you know, the, the big guys, uh, you might find more in, in open spaces like what we have up north. Uh, that would not surprise me. That wouldn't surprise me at all. So I think that, but, but, you know, you have to say to yourself, wow, the, what's, what's, what, what we hold in zoos has been changing for the last hundred years. Yeah, it's, it's gotta change over the next hundred. We'd be foolish to think that it isn't. In fact, when they're designing up north, they're, they're making several things uh generic, so that, because we know that different species are gonna rotate in and out of that according to need. What's, what's really fascinating for me about, uh, about, uh, Wild Care Park is that every animal that we're, we're rearing there uh either has a recovery plan, uh, that we can bring it back from the brink, or because we have it there, we can generate a recovery plan. So, and, and I don't, I've never seen that before, where you could go and say, yep, everything there is, is, is on the brink of extinction, but, but thanks to what, you know, this organization is doing, uh, they, they have a real chance. And, and that, to me, is a, is, I think, a fundamental and profound way of, of, of going after things. That seems to me to be a, a pretty powerful uh approach to take.
Well, uh, over the past year, okay, you know, I'm an animal and I'm in the zoo, but I'm looking at all these other animals, and they come to look at me. And over the last year, there haven't been as many people. Did the, did the animals realize that? Did you guys take note and say, like, they're more active, or they are more silent, or they are more this or that, just because the people weren't there?
Yeah, it's a great question. We have behavioral scientists. Uh, we're, we're doing uh, uh, camera monitoring. We picked four different species to work with. We had the before and then the during. Uh, and actually, we're getting after two, uh, after reopening. But I can just tell you anecdotally, uh, I, I was at work every single day. I, I just don't work very effectively from home. Uh, and, but there was no one else here, really. And so I would walk across the, the campus, and uh, if the, if the grizzlies saw me, they'd run to the window and start jumping up and down. It was crazy. And, and the sea lions were heartbreaking, because especially the, the one little girl that we have, just huge dark eyes, you know. It's just like, please come and play. And, and, and I would, I would every single, almost every time. Uh, but she's got more play in her than I have. No, I always left, like, feeling a little, you know, heartbroken myself. It, yeah. But, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And, and, Doctor, I'll determine on that. When, when the grizzlies came running up to you, do you think it was with affection?
Yeah.
Or, or if they wanted to get at you?
I could tell you that it was affectionate, but, but I had to, I would occasionally uh, uh, go up to the site of primate canopy trails, which is, I think, the best thing the zoo has ever done. Uh, it won't open until July, but it's phenomenal. But you had to walk by the tiger to get there, and the tiger did not look at me affectionately. I'm, I'm. Clear. It was absolutely clear that that wasn't affection in her stock.
You know, we only have thirty seconds to go, Doctor, and I should have given you more time for this one, but it was announced today that Jack Hannah from the Columbus Zoo has dementia and is retiring from public life. I, I know you know him. Would you like to say a quick word about Jack Hannah?
Yeah, what a, what a, he is a remarkable man, a wonderful man. And, uh, he had a great career. I think he was a great ambassador for a lot of things, you know, with the television show and, and all the other things he did. And, and he's just a lovely man. And we, we owe him a debt of gratitude.
Well, thank you so much. We owe you a debt of gratitude for your time tonight. Thank you very much.
Very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Dr. Jeffrey Bonner, CEO and President of the St. Louis Zoo. That's it for Next Up, everybody. We'll see you next week at this time. Keep it on Nine PBS.
Donnybrook is made possible by the members of Nine PBS.